Okay, I want to welcome everybody to the October 16, 2018 meeting of the Village of Rhinebeck Planning Board. First item on the agenda is Rhinebeck Yoga Center. 6400 Montgomery Street, 3rd floor. Come on up. Sign's available, seven square feet, and you're using six. It just says Yoga Center.
And you have an existing bracket?
Yep.
And the background is white?
Background's white. That's good. Because people...
It's a white sign.
If you get a cream or another background, it doesn't work as well for the sign.
No, no.
They always advise people not to use white, white, because it tends to look like paper.
Oh.
And also gets dirty.
Yeah.
So use like the cream then?
Yeah, a little cream or something is better than white. Usually, I mean, it's even better to have dark background, light lettering, but if you want to do that, I would just advise you to use a sort of creamy white rather than a white, white, because it ends up looking like a timber sign rather than a hardwood sign.
Yeah, I was wondering if like a dirty easier too.
On the main road in terms of...
So where is this hanging? Because there's an existing Pilates sign.
Yeah.
And then Zimmer has a sign not that far down the road.
There's like a window there that has two banners inside.
Right.
So the Pilates is on the left and mine will be on the right.
On the right, okay, inside, so it's not going to block Zimmer's sign.
No lighting?
No lighting.
It's already pretty bright, those windows panels.
I make a motion to approve the sign?
I'll second that.
Ball is in favor.
Simple enough, looks good.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
We need a picture of it up once it's up to the clerk. So going forward.
Thank you so much.
Second item on the agenda is Jeff and Nancy Ramey, 108 East Mocker Street. Site plan. We're going to have a public hearing on election day. You're putting papers on your microphone. So we went to the ZBA, the two variances, the side yard variances, and they asked you to move it to five feet, house, five feet from the property line?
Five feet from the property line.
Five feet, six and a quarter inches?
Well, five feet.
Five feet.
Closest points.
And then the garage is two.
The garage, we're pushing it back on the property, but not move it further from the property line?
So it's going to be the same?
Right. But just move it back further on the road.
And they approved that?
Yes. Yeah, the five foot six is from the front property line. And the side property line is five feet.
Okay, yes.
And the five foot six is where the existing house sits?
Since you're on film, maybe you should be on the side so the camera can... Since you're on film, maybe you should move to this side so the camera can pick it up.
Make sure.
That's your best sign.
Is it my best sign?
It looks nice. Well, our question we had yesterday talking about this was, what is going to be, how is this going to be done? What's going to be saved? What's going to be original? How will you move it?
Well, we obviously evaluate how feasible it is to lift it as a structure and move it versus disassemble it and re- erect it, which is often done with old buildings that are salvaged and reused. And it's going to really depend on the integrity of the connections and what extent of wood is rotted versus, you know, or can be braced at diagonals and picked up and moved. I mean, we're really going to have to kind of feel our way, but the intent is, as we've said before, to salvage and reuse the front part of the structure. We are lifting it up to get it higher. It's down in the ground now, so it's going into foundation. But so we're assuming we're going to replace the sills at the very least. You know, but that's the plan.
So you're going to reuse the 12 by 12 windows on the front side and the back?
Right, we're going to use them also closer to the front on the sides.
Right, good.
Everywhere we have them, we're bringing them up to where they're more visible.
And if you take off the cedar shakes and the siding is salvageable?
We'll absolutely use it, right?
Use it on the front, that would be nice.
Yeah, I mean, the question is with the siding, it's not just the condition, but how easily it comes off, having been now installed at least twice. Initially, you know, nailed it, then nailed again. We like splitting, and sometimes old wood dries out and it breaks, but we're going to do our best.
The quality of it is sometimes...
The quality is better than wood that's available now. That's exactly right.
So the stoop here, the front stoop?
Yes.
If you have five foot six, are you going to have space for...
Just barely. Yeah.
The steps are going to go come right out onto the, I mean, here it shows a sidewalk in front of the stoop, right?
Yeah, the sidewalk is further in front of the stoop. I mean, if you can see the relationship, the sidewalk is the furthest line to the top is this edge of the street.
Right, I'm just looking at the pictures.
Yes.
Oh, well, yeah, right.
Your picture shows a section of sidewalk in front of the steps.
Right.
But that's not going to in reality be there.
Well, if you look at the site plan, there is actually space from the front of the steps to the edge of the sidewalk. There's a property line which runs between the front of the steps and the sidewalk.
Okay.
And there is, you know, maybe two and a half, three feet.
Okay.
Because the red rings are generated on the same information that the site plan has.
Looking at a metal roof?
All right, well, we're showing a metal roof, and I think that's the preference of the clients, but a lot of times that's sacrifice when, you know, budget numbers get crunched. I'm sure the original was a keater, Jake roof, and those are also expensive and not going to last so long.
So it's not likely that it will be a metal roof?
The preference is a metal roof. It's really going to depend where the numbers come in.
But it's going to be wood siding one way or the other.
It will be wood siding.
Looks good. It's a good design.
It works?
You need a railing for the stoop?
I thought so, but interestingly, the code changes that all the time, and with the number of steps, I think we actually don't... I would want one there, but, you know.
It looks bare without one.
A little bit, right.
At least on the sides, if you could put like a three foot.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know that I agree with you on that. Same lots of houses that don't have it. With the height of it.
Yeah, the interesting thing is, you know, for guardrails, the code says it's 30 inches or more, but where do you need that? Well, you can obviously fall off something shorter than 30 inches and possibly break your neck, but that's the way the code is written, but it changes from time to time.
Now, take a look at examples, historic, 18, 20 examples, and see what you come up with in terms of railings or no railings.
Sure.
My tendency is to think that there should be railings, but...
What book is that?
I have a book here, Lost Examples of Colonial Architecture, that I would like to give to the mains, which is basically dozens and dozens of houses that... And the other thing I thought, it was a month ago, I was upstate at that salvage yard, and it's filled with stuff that I thought was appropriate for your house.
Okay.
Where is the salvage yard? Where?
That's in Fort Plain, up in the Mohawk Valley.
Okay.
Okay.
Huge factory building just filled with old architectural salvages.
Okay.
I think there's one in Albany, too.
Yeah, one in Albany, one in Troy.
Vanbury or outside of Vanbury?
Thank you.
So because we've had some letters coming in, it's a different design than what's originally proposed, we thought there has to be a public hearing on election day. And with some comments, we already have three letters so far. Once the public announcement's called in, we'll get some more letters, but we have to have public input on the 6th of November.
Sure.
If that's convenient for you.
Yes. Just vote early.
It looks good.
Looks very good. Good job.
Great.
Anybody have any more questions?
No, it looks good.
All right, so Ryan will send out the notices for the public hearing, and we will see you on election day.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Second on the list, whether or any other...
Warren had to come with two names.
As always. Thank you, Warren. I'm going to be on for the next one. So I just pulled some things off the board which I can give you.
Next item on the agenda is a mountain made agricultural associates LLC, proposed farm market substance for maintenance.
Good evening, my name is Christian Hodgson. I'm the engineer for the applicant. While we're waiting for Warren to get back, I can get started with just an outline of the modifications to the site plan from the previous meeting. Those modifications are all detailed in our letter dated September 28, 2018. So the easiest thing is to just run through that letter quickly. The site entrance from Route 9 has been modified. The planning board had some concerns with the size of the radius of the curves going into that, into the site from Route 9. We've reduced them from 33 feet to 25 feet. The DOT has preferred radius of 25 feet for this. So they weren't very open to reducing it any more than that, but it has been significantly reduced from the 33 feet. And I've also shown site distance measurements and the site triangles on sheet C2 of the plan set, both in the north and south direction. And there's adequate site distance in both directions. I show a 30 mile per hour zone for the approach from the north, from the village side. That whole zone is 30 miles per hour. From the, approaching the site from the south, since prior to the site, it does transition from 40 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour at the site. By the time you get to the site, you are at 30 miles an hour. I use the 40 mile per hour zone, 40 mile per hour zone site distance regulations for the south, and that's all detailed on the plan. There's a site circulation plan shown also on C2, showing a 30-foot box truck accessing the site from Route 9 and maneuvering through the parking lot and backing up to the loading aisle. I know that there were concerns with any delivery trucks blocking the entrance from Mill Street. I was just trying to demonstrate that a box truck making deliveries from Route 9 can actually back up into that loading area without either blocking the access from Mill Street and without having to even maneuver anywhere on Mill Street to get to that loading area.
But you can't do that if there's cars in those two parking spaces.
Right, so the intent is to have deliveries take place outside of peak hours, that they're probably going to be happening first thing in the morning. And if there are cars in that parking lot, there's plenty of room for the truck to pull through to Mill Street and then back up. So we're not really sure where the box truck is going to be delivering from, either from Mill Street or Route 9, but I just wanted to show you that it was possible for a 30-foot box truck, which is fairly large, I think it's larger than what they're anticipating to make deliveries, to actually maneuver in this site.
Now, Christian, have you contacted the DOT?
Yeah, I met with Walter out there.
All right, because there's...
Chuck, Chuck, I mean, Chuck Walter.
Yeah, so Chuck, because I talked to Chuck earlier today, and he wanted us to forward your study to Evolisi Pacheco. Familiar with him? I guess he's out of the Poughkeepsie Burnett Boulevard location. And so apparently, he's the DOT engineer that does, or basically signs off on traffic studies. And I have his email. So what I'll do is I'll give that to you, and then you can just kind of forward it to him, at least for comment. And it's I V E L I S S E dot P A C H E C O at DOT dot New York dot gov. And just forward him your study, because he wants to basically take a look at it, because they're concerned about that, that one intersection where there's going to be a new development into the town, and it comes out off of 9 where Mill is, and so there's going to be a heavier traffic flow.
Are you talking about the Grazner's?
Grazner's.
Okay, so yeah, I talked about that with Chuck. I was, because you guys had brought that up, to look at that traffic study. We didn't do a traffic study for this. We looked at ITE numbers, and we did the site distance measurements and all of that. So I did write up to Chuck, though, about the Grazner's you guys recommended, and he wasn't familiar with any study that had been done. So I'm thinking that maybe that's what he's talking about. Maybe he talked to him.
Okay.
So I can do that.
Yeah, so we just needed to get some type of comment, hopefully prior to the public hearing.
The information that we did regarding, that we did collect regarding traffic generation was that this site really isn't going to be generating anything significant. You know, Seeker uses a threshold of 100 trips per hour as being a significant, as potentially having a significant impact on a road. We had a conservative estimate of around 21 trips per hour during peak hour. I do want to make a correction. I can make a correction right into and resubmit. My letter referenced the 10th edition of the ITE, and I indicated that there was no information with regard to farmers' markets in that 10th edition. I was referencing the 9th edition. The newest edition, the 10th edition, which just came out, does actually have one section on farmers' markets. I looked at that section as well. The two studies that they did were based on large-scale farm markets in like a town center setting where they would have multiple vendors, up to 90 vendors, one of the studies was. And, you know, happened on a Sunday afternoon, and the whole street was shut down, that type of farm market. So it wasn't really applicable. The, so the numbers that we used were based on other research papers that recommended using either a variety store or a nursery, a warehouse nursery, that would be more similar to a farmer's market. And that's what we used.
So you're playing with the truck backing into the loading dock. It would then be able to go straight ahead out onto Route 9 and not have to go onto Mill when it leaves?
I tend to think that they'll tend to pull out onto Mill and back into the loading area rather than do parallel with the loading area, unless they're told or striped in some way to make sure that this is the loading area.
And you can do that, I did run that route as well, and can do that without, and still have enough room to get one car by in Mill Street. I can't really move the entrance any further south, because there's a utility pole there.
Right.
And moving it further north doesn't really help that situation. So I was trying to minimize the impact to the existing access. So like you said, that situation would work, but they may partially block this entrance, 30 foot would go to about here. I mean, you could still fit a vehicle there. I can show that if you want to.
Yeah. I mean...
How close, how close to the actual loading dock do they have to get?
They're going to be, as of now, they're actually going to be hand carrying things over to, either into this door right here, that there's going to be a new, there's a proposed door in the rear, or to the existing double door in the rear. So, I mean, they don't have to be...
To be perpendicular to the loading dock and not backing into it.
It can be either, what I'm showing is that basically, it's not perpendicular to it, but they could have that situation also, so...
Yeah, the way this is, where the vehicle's parked here, it creates sort of a blind spot coming in from Mill Street around that corner into the parking lot, you know? But if you do a 30-foot truck going perpendicular to the loading area and still have room to open up the truck and get out in the back, you're sticking out almost into the street.
Right.
Not into the street, but into that access.
Yeah.
And I think we want to discourage truck traffic on Mill Street.
Which is what I was trying to demonstrate, that we could actually maneuver the site without having to go onto Mill Street.
Well, once your vendors are told, this is where we want you to park, it's just that, you know, I thought about removing this last space here. And instead, say, putting it over here. You know, and that way you could pull, that would create more room right here so that you're not blocking half the aisle.
I have the same thought, yeah.
And so that way they could pull directly into the loading area, and there wouldn't, there'd be more sort of site distance around this corner.
We would have to move this all further out to actually add another space.
Well, not really. I sketched it on my plan, but there's no...
To have just an angle block?
No, just one barrel right here. And I showed it, measured it out. Anyway, I think you could do that, and that could be like your employee spot or whatever. And that just seems to me, it would remove this bottleneck at the corner, allow this person, the truck to pull in here.
Yeah, it would certainly make circulation easier.
And allow the lanes open. So I would take a look at that, even if you have to move the dumpster, you know, a couple feet that way.
I have a serious concerns about two-way traffic in and out of the back, not because of the traffic right there, but because of the two out of the three nearest intersections that allow you to get back out of there at the south end of Mill Street and then I guess the north end of Mill Street. Both of those are really awkward angles, and if we had an increase in traffic, a part going out the back and then trying to get it back on Route 9 where you don't have a 90-degree angle with clear sight lines, I've been at both of those, and I really don't think it's safe to be looking back like this. I would prefer that we just either eliminate Mill Street or have it so it's just coming in, so you're not having people down here and up past Melly's Law Office, because I just look at that as a severe safety concern. I wouldn't want traffic that started here to be in an accident once they're here.
You're concerned with the Mill Street and Route 9 intersections?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the only thing is you can't, that's a public street. So, I mean, right now, the planning board has the authority to make suggestions to the site, but the actual street itself has to go...
Not make the street one way.
I'm sorry?
Not make, you don't want to make the street one way.
No, just the direction of slow traffic, you do suggest?
He's just saying, you shouldn't be able to exit out on the Mill Street from the parking lot.
Right, I don't mind coming in as my, I mean, if I lived in that neighborhood and I saw what the increase in Garden Street has done to my street, I don't want the neighbors over there being subjected to the same kind of things. And I don't want anybody who's unfamiliar with the area, they may have come in on Route 9, and they see a backstreet, next thing you know, there's an accident down here or way up past Melly's office, because those are problematic intersections. And I avoid them because I'm getting older, and I can't stretch my neck, and I can't see. And David has said the same thing. He only goes there with his wife because he needs a co-pilot to get out on Route 9. It's very hard to head south from either the, about 9 Mill or down below. Really hard to cross double lanes and head south. Because nobody, it says 30, but they're not doing, they're not doing 30.
Which I would think would be an argument to keep that Mill Street access open so people can exit onto Route 9 from the site. But if they don't need to go to Route 9 and someone is off of Mill Street, then to...
They can go back to Parsonage and out that way. The new intersection is the safest one, because it's actually, you know...
And also by doing that, you would lessen the impact on the residential component of the...
I disagree, because if you close, if you make Mill Street one way, all that...
I could make, I could make Mill Street one way.
No, I'm sorry, if you make the entrance onto Mill Street one way, all you're doing is routing all of that neighborhood traffic for people going to Parsonage. Either they have to go around and make that really tight, sharp turn to get back to Mill Street to go to the neighborhood. So if they're going to go there either way, you're just sending them out into a more dangerous situation, onto Route 9, then stopping to make a very, very sharp right turn to head back onto Mill Street, rather than just exiting safely onto the street.
Okay, but they live in that neighborhood.
Right, I mean, I don't think anyone that doesn't live in that neighborhood is going to use to go there.
People...
I don't think anybody, not many people are going to come out of this parking lot to go over here and take a left, which is the most difficult thing. They will come out this way to take a left.
Right.
So I tend to avoid one-way streets, one-way entrances unless it's absolutely necessary. I think having multiple ways of getting in and out of a site is a good thing, generally speaking. And it would be different if this was, you know, Adams or some gigantic traffic generator, but the traffic generation out of this is not going to be so significant that I think it's going to be tempting for anybody to come out of the back way in order to get back on the line up here or over here.
No.
And if they're doing it here, it would be to head south rather than to come back...
No, the only thing is people will come out here to avoid, right, go to Parsonage and avoid Route 9 altogether. Yeah.
But more likely, it's going to be people who live along Parsonage or the neighborhood's along Parsonage.
No, I disagree. I think it's going to be people that live elsewhere in the village or live east of the village are going to, if they're going to go here, they're going to go out that way, because that's the way to avoid the light in the middle of town.
Well, yeah. A lot of those people are people who live in the middle, but shouldn't, who live those way.
But again, it dumps more traffic onto that residential.
But not a significant amount of traffic, is what I'm suggesting.
Oh, I don't know. I'm not sure that, you know...
I'm not seeing it significant, and also, I think they're going to go that way anyways. I live in that neighborhood, so I would have to come out to Route 9, make a sharp right, head right back in, and I think that's a less safe situation, because now I'm slowing down at that intersection in order to make a very sharp turn.
But I tend to agree that you should have a two-way entrance. And, you know, people who live in the village use the village streets in order to get to the backways to places. Everybody knows how to do all the back roads. That's part of living in the village. It's part of a grid system that distributes traffic rather than funnels it all onto one street. That's what you're supposed to do in town.
But when you're putting a commercial use in a residential area, then I think you want to minimize the impact on the residential area.
It's a permitted use, it's an agricultural use. Just so...
I think we've seen all that panel walks.
No, no, no. It's a, it's a commercial agricultural use.
So, which is an increase in intensity.
Which is an increase of intensity.
Like, there are 18 spots in your parking lot, and I'm concerned about Mill Street. Is 18 spots enough, including the employees? I don't know how many employees you're planning on having.
It is. It makes the code sufficient.
Because there's the idea of no parking on Mill, which...
Well, we're going to have to circulate.
We have to circulate that, we have to talk about that, and we need the village board to get in on that to, you know, maybe no parking from here up or something, not all the way down. I don't know how many neighbors would have people coming. A lot of people on Mill have long driveways and large parking areas. I don't know how many do not, how many would have a problem with no parking, or we get permit parking like we have on Livingston.
Right, we said we would not object to such an application. We just ask that it not be connected to this necessarily, because we can't control how quickly the village board takes that up or takes it up at all, since it's legislative.
My two agencies want to comment on this proposal, and it's the police department and the fire department. They want to take a look at the site plan and make comment before the public hearing.
And we need DOT and Board of Health. Do we have Board of Health clearance on this? Is that the new septic system, bleach fields?
Right, we haven't had that approval yet, but that's pending. So they witnessed the soil tests, and the soils were great. There's no reason that they wouldn't approve.
So what's the capacity? How many people can you have in the building at one time? Do you have a capacity number?
That, I guess, will be determined in conjunction with the loading inspector.
Can we, can we figure that out? Because I guess the other, the other question I have is with parking, that's presuming that you're not going to have any events, that it's just going to be a straight agricultural retail operation or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, the occupancy, I'd have to calculate off of the floor plan and figure, look at it and see how the interior is designed with the fixed seating or...
There are three tables and 12 chairs now in the new design.
Yeah, but I'm thinking more in terms of, well, let's clear up the space and let's have, you know, a wine and cheese gathering for 50 people.
That's not something that we've anticipated.
Well, and again, it's not just you, it's whoever occupies this structure afterwards.
Right, so we've given you a parking plan that complies with the newly adopted village standards, so I assume the village took into consideration the size of a building and the square footage when they came up with the new standards. So we've given you something that complies in all respects with your zoning, so I don't want to start all hypothetical situations, because what if there's a parade there? Or, I mean, we can come up with all sorts of situations.
Yeah, the calculation's already here. Christian already formulated it.
We have one more than what's required currently.
The minimum amount that's required.
Correct. One more than the minimum.
Right, but we can require more than the minimum amount. It's a range.
One more than the maximum on the minimum range?
Yeah.
Space is required, or 17, provide that we're seeing a range.
It's split use, so retail use and restaurant use for the just outdoor seating and indoor seating. So we've actually doubled.
Right, your new standard is one per four, and you're, so that's not a rate change any longer?
So the retail, the parking for retail use, it's a duration in the entire building, and then on top of that, since there's going to be some outdoor seating, we use the restaurant code, so there's, if it was just retail, there's adequate spacing, and then on top of that, to take into account the extra spaces for the tables and chairs, we added the restaurant cap addition also.
Because no same person's going to park on Route 9, and if they're, if they're parking on that building, they don't want to park on Mill.
I mean, we live in a small village. This is one of the few uses I would say that's new that actually is going to have the minimum amount of parking for the use. We have lots of restaurants and other things in the village that can't provide any parking, so I understand the concern about parking, but this is better than most situations.
The agricultural use property, that's not going to be pick-your-own-pumpkins or pick-your-own strawberries. It's going to be farmed by, you know, the family, whatever.
The plan is to continue having it farmed as is. You know, in the future, if they want to have a pumpkin patch, they could do that, but it's not in the plans at this point.
Okay, no, I was just thinking, you know, of the number of cars, you know, it's pick-your-own, whatever.
Right, right, that would be a draw.
So that's not in the thought.
They may start, right now it's planted with, I think it's farming.
Count, I mean, did it get a commission? I have to double check.
And if the farm market opens, they may start planting some, you know, tomatoes or other things that could be sold at the market, but I don't think it's going to be, it's not.
Take your own kind of...
Not here, that's what they should be doing, parking.
One thing I asked for last time was that the south porch, which is only five feet wide and has two doors open out into it, that could be widened and the aisle space could be narrowed?
So we kept the aisle space 28 feet instead of the 0.4, just helps with maneuverability.
Right. Can you either put the doors going in?
We got rid of one of the doors. You said, you know, we would window the door, we would window it, so one door went away, and the other door, which is to the back, existing door, it's really just an exit door. It's not, I mean, for, it's exit from the storage area, it's not for the retail area, so it's not like the door's going to be swinging out as people are walking by. I think we felt that it was more important to have maneuvering space in the parking lot, and the, we don't want people, like, putting tables and chairs under there because they're out front in the picnic area, so I think on balance, we felt that it was going to work better the way it is, rather than encouraging the side porch. We're not going to have fruit or vegetable display in the side porch either, because the front is where the windows are, where you can control it from inside, so that seemed to be the important porch to have deeper, rather than adding a couple of feet to the side porch, but that's, I don't know if Christian made any other changes.
Well, as long as the doors don't come out into it.
Yeah, we got, and I said, we got rid of the door at the front and put a window in, which is one of your thoughts?
Right.
But I hear from Adam Christian. So here we just put in a full window, the other one that's in the front, to give more visibility, and this is just an exit door at the back, so it's really not, it's a second emergency, it's our kind of regular door.
So people aren't going to go up to that door from the parking lot to try and get in?
No, it was not a handle. It's just a push, push out a door.
Okay.
But, I mean, yeah, well, people that come to the front door, that's the whole, the whole point.
Exactly.
Walkway and so forth. The only other change here is we called details on the recess lighting in the porch roof, and we've had the request of, I think your consulting attorney, we've shown a basement plan, just showing the storage down there. There's no general use of anything else down there.
And the bathroom's handicap accessible?
Yes.
It looks tiny. Let's go. The other thing that I suggested, and I haven't seen it on here, I don't think, is that since the use was tied to the idea of it's a working farm parcel in the agricultural district, can we put in there some sort of requirement that the farm portion of the property maintains as an active farm use that would be connected to the retail use in here, meaning growing something that would be actually sold in the property?
Right, well, I think Victoria was just addressing that. That sounds more like a legal question to me.
So you'll see in the letter that you received from Ag markets back in July, is action permissible to just operate a farm market on a parcel in the Ag district without any adjacent agricultural use? Should the, should the landowner convert any of that land to a non-agricultural use? There's all sorts of clawback provisions, and we'd probably lose the agricultural district status. I don't know if they want to be tied to keeping it in operation, but to do anything else would negate the Ag district status that it has.
Yeah, but I know that's the opinion of the Agricultural Department, but the opinion of the zoning in the village of Rhinebeck says that the only way that this has happened is if it's tied to an agricultural use.
You mean, so, well, it's one big lot.
I know, that's the point. So the point is, are you going to be using that for agricultural uses that can be tied directly, or are you going to do all your work up in Tibbely or some other remote location and put it in here for sale?
So right now, the field is planted with barley.
Right.
And there's not a huge market for barley in the farm market.
Right, exactly. Well, I'm suggesting that wouldn't it be nice if this grew vegetables that would be sold on site, and that way you would identify the use of the farm market with the use of the parcel in the village.
I think we can grow some of it on site, but as you know, there's no greenhouses here, and if we put up greenhouse structures, I think you'd start getting an outcry. The farm in Tibbely does have the greenhouse structures, which gives us the year-round vegetables, so, you know, we need to talk to the farmer. There's a program that they have in order to get all the vegetables growing at the right times, in order to supply the farm, get anything grown on this site and just be extra, because it's a small lot, relatively speaking.
It would be, I'm just suggesting, and I'm thinking that we have the right to require a note on the plan, that that be used for agricultural uses that's tied to the, so instead of growing barley...
For years, a portion of that lot was corn.
Or potatoes.
Right.
Potatoes.
So, I mean, if you, if you made that a condition of your approval, then we would consider it and decide whether, you know, we wanted to accept it or not, but...
Well, think about it, because I think that's something that I see as being integral to the way this is justified in terms of our zoning, and so if there was, if you could say that this parcel is going to be used for farm purposes, it's not going to be subdivided or, you know, lie fallow or used for some crop that's going to be sold on the general market somewhere, who knows where, even if it's going to be said that, well, it's growing barley that's used as feedstock for the stuff that's used on the parcel, I don't know.
I mean, the initial argument that came in here was that that parcel was growing things that could be sold.
Well, it is. I mean, it's part of the farm complex. All I'm saying is that the farm complex has, there's lots of timing issues that go into growing crops, and so if this is being used for barley, tomatoes are coming from the greenhouse. They're all part of a farm. But I understand what you're saying. You will take it under advisement.
Think about it, from an advertising aspect for your client, just to have things that are grown right next to it, people driving by would see this and then, oh, there's there, and go in there and buy it.
Fresh corn, right from the site, you know, or whatever.
Even if it's trucked in, the perception that it's...
Or if 90% of it's trucked in.
Okay, I understand your point. I will bring it up with them. I think, you know, I think they'll be happy to plant whatever you ask them to plant at this point.
So, John, what approvals do we need?
Waiting for the Board of Health. Is there any Village water?
Um, yes.
And you want fire, police, and DOT?
Well, the, right, so the two agencies that are familiar with the project want a PDF version, so they can review it strictly with traffic flow and fire apparatus access. So at some point, I'm going to have to circulate that to them this week, so they can make a comment prior to the public hearing. DOT, Chuck Walter spoke with him. He's familiar with the project. He just wants the plan sent to the field engineer that specifically is, well, Pacheco, he's in Bickham City, so I have to basically send him a version of the plan so he can make comment.
One other point I had in my notes. In the previous site plans, we had four trees across the front. They've been reduced to three. They're a larger variety of trees, which is good, I think, but I was hoping to get another tree put back in the middle. The two trees in front of the building are 95 feet apart, which is a lot longer than normal street tree distance, so if we could put another tree closer to the sidewalks around at the midpoint, so that you'd have three trees across the front edge of the building and one on the other side of the driveway, I think it would be sort of more of a street tree effect as you go down the road.
Yeah, the intent was to try to avoid blocking the building, obviously, in the version that we were showing, and we've added a good amount of lower landscaping along the sidewalk and towards the approach to the building. I hear what you're saying, but that was the, that was my dad.
I can understand why, but the, you know, a tall tree, not a dogwood, but now a red oak is going to grow up and not block, block it. You're going to be a C right underneath it. That's the way street trees work, so I think if you plant decent-sized trees, you won't have any trouble blocking your site distance. Your signs or your porch. I think it, you're coming into the village, it'll help slow down traffic if it has a cadence like street trees, rather than having 90-something feet apart, which is more like landscaping on the corners of your lot rather than along the front edge.
One issue that's not part of this, we've taken out the signage for now and will be returning for approval of the signage at a later date, but the only sign that they're going to, they're going to have a sign on the building, and I think there was some sensitivity about putting a tree where it would block the sign on the building as well.
Did you, did you talk to where you think that these three houses are aligned? Is that an additional right there?
Yeah, so they're just one, two, three, four, you know, it's sort of, it has a cadence to it, so it feels like street trees rather than, you know, corner landscaping, and, and I, I know you're going to put signs on the building.
But you also had a...
Free-standing sign.
We're going to be reusing the free-standing sign as well. So you're saying you'd like it near the sidewalk?
Yeah, like near the sidewalk entrance, you know, sort of halfway between the trees on the ends of the buildings, so then you would have a tree essentially 50, 55 feet apart, so that would, that's, that's still pretty generous distances for a village, which usually have 30 to 40 feet apart for street trees.
It's just that this area is pretty wide open, so there's not many street trees along Route 9 in this area for...
That's why we're trying to fix it.
Okay.
Hobson's was always like really wide open, nothing in terms of landscaping. Now we're trying to bring, you've done a decent job on the architecture and on the landscaping and the porches. I think just having that one other tree would allow that sort of street tree effect, and it acts as a slowdown, believe it or not, and they've been studies done, and when you put street trees close to the street, people slow down, because it's sort of a natural indicator that you're coming into an area where things are a little tighter and pedestrians might be around and that sort of thing. I would love to see the trees on the opposite side of the sidewalk. You can talk to the Walters or whoever at DOT, they never allow that.
They, you did speak to them about this.
Right.
The sidewalk would have had them be moved in very far.
They'll do it in certain places, but won't do it otherwise, you know. They'll say, in 30 mile an hour zones, they'll do it, not 45 mile an hour, and this is 30, but nobody drives 30, so they won't resist it.
The Village Board is...
I do too, but I...
I do.
The cops sit in their parking lot.
But the Village Board has brought those signs that say, you know, the speed limit is 30, you're doing 42, you know, they're going to be putting them up, so, right?
Right, yes.
So there'll be one here to tell people to slow down.
But these are going to be decent-sized trees, and they will act as street sweezies, even if they're farther back, and I would like... We should point out that there is also additional trees along the Mill Street front edge to fill in the gaps, so that there would be a sort of landscape screenage between the houses on Mill Street and the back end of this property.
Yeah, the remaining changes are, just like you said, additional trees on the north side of the Mill Street entrance and along the south side, and we've also added some lighting in the parking lot, which I know that you guys, I'm sure you'd like to discuss that tonight, because there was some concern with the fact that there was no...
There was no lighting.
There was no, yeah, there was no pole lighting in the parking lot. The original plan was to just do recess lighting beneath the porch overhang, so we just added two small 12-foot-high pole-mounted lights that will be shielded and will direct all the light downward. There's a lighting plan showing the photometrics. They're not exceeding the .1 foot candle at the property line, so I'm not sure how the board feels about that.
So no plan for anything solar in terms of solar powering anything on the site?
Not to my knowledge, no.
They have a flat roof, right?
They have a...
We won't...
No.
That's right.
They have a south facing roof.
They're putting a new roof up.
Won't be for long.
That's something to think about.
It's not, it's not south facing, no, it's west.
It's west facing.
Eastern west.
Southwest.
Southwest. It's enough that...
But we will raise the issue, but it's not going to be part. I mean, we're really looking to...
I do.
...report when we get this approved, so it's not required.
So can we set the public hearing date?
For election day?
As an incentive to get these comment letters in?
Yep.
Will you have all your answers by election day?
Yeah, I'm actually speaking with PD and the Fire Department now, so that's not going to be an issue, and then DOT is just, they're waiting for the email, so definitely before the date, November 6th.
I'll reach out to Chuck tomorrow, because he's had the plans for a few weeks now, so...
And, yeah, so the election's really actually next door. We've had meetings during...
They're breaking here, right?
Why break a tradition?
I have a question on the garbage enclosure there. I see the delivery model that you made, but have you considered what the garbage trucks... I see the delivery model that you made, but have you considered what the garbage trucks, because right now it goes in, is there enough room for it to make a turnaround? Because once a garbage truck goes in, if it's not, it's going to have to go straight back to Route 9 with the beep 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 beep? Or is there enough room there? So that when it's backing up, all garbage trucks have that alarm going off and, you know? I'm up at 6:00 AM, so I'm witnessing my garbage neighbors going beep 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 at 6:00 AM. But, you know, is there a good, is there a good enough turnaround or does this have to be perhaps...
There is. I can show, it would have, it would be a multiple point turn to try to do a U-turn and get back to Route 9. I would assume that he'd probably go straight onto Mill Street and go north or south. You know, if it's early in the morning, there's not much traffic around anywhere, but I could certainly show that.
I just don't want to have an increase in that kind of noise. I certainly wouldn't want them to go all the way back to Route 9 with that alarm going off.
Yeah, no, I can't.
What if they put a condition alarm?
It's nice music.
So I guess the parking on Mill is something we still have to, or the no parking on Mill.
What's the village board issue?
Yeah.
Right. We have to make, I'm sure the mayor and the village board have one recommendation as to what, if no parking at how far on one side of the...
This is something that would fall into the jurisdiction of the police as much as anybody else in terms of...
We could take out a vote to recommend that the village board consider a no parking from the entrance over to the Route 9 exit intersection of Mill Street? Just to let you know, that's really what they're going to suggest. Okay. So everybody's in favor of that?
All in favor? All right.
And again, we're not, we're not waiting for the village board to take that action.
Right.
Right. We're just making a recommendation.
It'll be a while before it's built and open to business and it'll be time for the village board to react to that.
I have a question just procedurally. I would assume that any approvals that may or may not be given would be contingent on the health department approval. We could demonstrate that after a conditional approval. I just, I hesitate to submit to the health department for final approval prior to site plan approval in case anything needs to change. Again, there's no, there's an existing septic system there. The soils are good. There's no reason why we wouldn't be able to get a septic system there. It's a two acre parcel, so more than that.
The health department doesn't like to see the plans until the planning board has signed off on them.
Right.
Doesn't want to do it twice. So that's what we normally do, we do as a condition of site plan approval.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure.
You can't open without a septic system, so it's a fail-safe mechanism in place.
Yeah, I would assume that there would be no, you wouldn't be able to sign the plans for the final approval until we can assert the health department approval.
There's no geographic restrictions or anything like that?
Nope. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a pretty straightforward application. And there's already, regarding water, there's already a water hookup, three-quarter inch service that I believe is there in the rear of, in the building.
Are you dealing with David Pearson, do you know?
I think I may have called him last year about it. Because I asked him if we needed to do an RPZ. But since we're not doing any restaurant, actual food preparation or anything like that, we shouldn't need to have an RPZ installed, so, but I can, I can double check them.
You just said there's no fire hydrant.
No, there's a fire hydrant on Hill Street.
Okay.
Yeah. One other question I remembered I had, there's an existing stockade fence around the loading area now, and it says existing stockade fence to be removed. The section that's around the generator in the back there, can that be left?
Yeah.
Because, you know, I don't know how often you're going to run that generator, probably not very often, but I don't know, maybe it's something that you'll do, and having a stockade fence around the back pen, just as a way of screening it and attenuating the noise.
Sure. That's not, that's not a good deal. I was showing some bollards being added to around it too, just in case there was some truck, truck traffic from deliveries.
So what I heard in the next meeting was addition of one tree, we working on a space for a turnaround, leave the fence, leave the generator, and those were really the only changes to the site plan for the public hearing.
And everything, so everything will be in place and you can...
Yep.
Okay. This is the election night, we're up to public hearings.
Did you guys have any comment on the lighting that was proposed as an comment?
It's on the last page. It's on the crop side of the, starting bleeding off into the field is not a problem then. They're 12-foot and they're full cutoff lights, so. So that's what I think.
So will those lights be put on some sort of timer so that they're not...
They can be, we can talk to the owner and see.
In terms of lessening the impact in terms of the people that live across the street.
Is there a specific time that...
Well, I would just, you provide us with times of operation.
Right.
So it should be, you know, an hour before and an hour after or something along those lines.
So we can just, we can add a note to the plan, just reinforcing that?
That would be...
So in the summer, you wouldn't need the lights?
You might not, right.
Right, most of the time.
But it doesn't, I don't think it makes sense for them to be on in that residential area.
All night.
Not in operation. Because what, by having them on, it might then attract people to hang out there or whatever.
Also, I did have some correspondence with your attorney about the secret classification of the site. And she agreed that it's a type 2 secret action, so there's no environmental review required so long as the basement remains storage space. And the board has provided that the floor down the ground is just storage space.
Unless it's under 5 miles per feet.
We'll have her here at the public hearing so we can make sure we get correct information. Anyone have any other questions for now?
Do you guys have a copy?
So when do you, when do you need the new plans?
Well, we should present them to the public on the 6th.
So we should have them by the Thursday, Wednesday or Thursday before the meeting?
Could these be sent as PDFs so we can look at them?
Sure.
It's good if we have, if we have them a week before, we can look at them at home so we don't come in and look at them the first time at the meeting.
Okay, so one week, two days before the meeting, we'll have PDFs and other copies.
And the previous plans, were they circulated to whomever that...
I'm glad you had them, we're reading the comments.
All right. So we should have everything in place on the 6th.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay, much. So we had a... Said a few miscellaneous items to add. The village board approved forming a short-term sign committee to revise the sign regulations. And John sent me a note and I drafted some of my concerns and just sent it out today. And if you, other people could comment on the things that they, they have to think about signs. I still need, I still have specific examples of whatever. So we can clarify the sign code, we can make some of the changes we need.
Is that a sign?
That's a sign. It's a sign. Thanks me.
Who has that sign?
I do.
Oh, okay.
Wappingers. They got them in Wappingers.
They took them off.
Yeah, I told the board that, actually, to make a suggestion that each of the members could provide some, what I characterize as best practices.
Stop here, somebody can make a, here you have it on tape over here.
The only, we wanted to just avoid the notion that it's a committee, that it was a working group.
Right.
So the notion was that the, the planning board would funnel, to my attention, each that I gave to David, as John's already done, suggestions, recommendations, best practices. And then I'll sit with John and Ryan, kind of merge them all together. I'll take responsibility for trying to modify the code and then circulate that and hopefully move through this as quickly as possible. But I stressed to the mayor and the villagers that I wasn't looking to sign a committee as a working group. And the only person outside of this, this team that might be involved would be other people, probably we want some input from the zoning board, I'll link that up to you folks. And then I thought it might be good to have some buy-in from someone within the chamber, you know, just to...
I was waiting for that.
Yeah. That was actually John's suggestion.
No, that's a good idea.
Well, I wish you would have told him that. You should also get early input from Rich Olson because the Supreme Court has come up with some very strange recent rulings on local sign laws that make it almost impossible to regulate content of any type.
Right.
So you have to make sure that you're...
You can regulate location, you can regulate size. There are things you can regulate, but some of the things that David wants to regulate here...
Might not be possible.
Are probably not possible in terms of legal.
David, you clarified it. You said basically if the villages have an event, it's okay to have the signs in the village, but if Red Oaks have an event and we have the signs posted in the village of Red Oak, that was going to be an issue?
It says the local municipalities have some rights. And you could say, we don't want a sign for the Kingston train show or a fundraiser in Poughkeepsie at the Grand Hotel for something. We don't, we just have signs everywhere like they are out on the main roads. We just really, we could say we only want signs universal for events in the village of Rhinebeck. And that would, that doesn't depend on, I printed out Tim's 80-page book.
Not even road races.
Not even road races. I printed out, you know, Tim's 80-page book from Walbein, it's a lot of Supreme Court cases. When you found. And it's a lot of Supreme Court, this versus so and so against so and so. And it's freedom of speech and it has to be applied universally because if we don't want a sandwich wood for this category, but we will allow a sandwich wood for this category, it's not something to be able to do. It's, you know, you have to, it's all or nothing, but, you know.
You know, I think one of the things that we have to be careful of is is too strictly delineating the village from the town in terms of some events and activities.
Yeah, I'm not sure you can even...
Yeah.
Favor signs for Rhinebeck versus Red Oak or Kingston.
In the village, I mean.
I'll reach out to Rich, it's a good suggestion to give Rick heads up at this point.
We'd have to run all of this by him.
Even if we do it legally, I think that we want to be careful in terms of...
Yeah, Rhinebeck is really one...
That we don't present ourselves as being too exclusive, too controlling, David.
And Rhinebeck is Rhinebeck, you know, whether it's the town, the village, the village is part of the town and they really shouldn't make those sorts of decisions.
So the bars or would have been finding more signs and...
It's just that, you know, John is in an awkward position of saying, you know, enforce the code.
Right.
You know, go out and be the bad guy and arrest people. And it's like, well, are they really violating the sign law or not? And it's very, you know, he's something solid to say this or that.
One of the questions that I would have this day is to what extent can we require a permit for anything that's not a political sign?
I believe it's like 45 days or what have you.
Right, so, you know, that might, you know, looking at some of those things, might help resolve some of the, some of the issues in terms of signs being proliferating all over the place. So if somebody has to get a permit to put it in, then at least say they can't just in the middle of the night show up and drop some signs in or staple them to...
Telephone walls.
Right.
I sent them a note to the mayor and John saying that they, the event code requires a lot of people to come to the village, and they have to approve all these events every month. And attached to that could be signage, you know, what kind of signs you're going to have and where you're going to put it. So as part of the approval of the event would be where these signs would go and how many are there.
And the size, yeah.
Which would, you know, and then you could have some sort of list in terms of what our desired regulations are that go to people when they, you know, so that way if there's a train show in Kingston, you know, maybe, maybe there's a fee for putting up a certain types of signs.
Right.
And a limitation in terms of how long they can be up.
If you haven't paid a fee or permit, then it can be immediately removed.
Immediately removed. Yeah, but that has to be changed because John has, it says 30 days.
Right, 30 days is ridiculous.
That's got to go. That's a definite one, that Pete or John can't remove an ill, definitely illegal sign.
See, we never had a zoning enforcement officer who moves as fast as...
Yeah.
The condition athlete that he is.
But I tell you, Pete Dunn, Sergeant Dunn, he's, he's pretty proactive with, I believe it's the penal law, where you can't have signs on utility poles, signs and so on. So he's pretty...
It's always been one of Judge Kane's...
Sounds tough, I hope so.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay. So with his cooperation and assistance, it's a lot easier. But for instance, the for sale signs, now normally you have to pull it after so many days of the sale. Now, now there's one out there now, I know of, that I'm going to pick up tomorrow and with a copy of the code, and it has the address of the sign. And it's going to be brought to the house and say, well FYI, after you have this sale, don't leave the sign out for a week and a half, you know? So, I mean, you know, we educate the public in that sense, and it's a small enough village to where I can patrol it and kind of keep on top of it.
If you're here 24 hours.
I am.
Do we prevent off-premises signs? Like, you know, that's what, the definition of off-premises is probably one of the big questions to ask. What does that mean? You know, there's a sign in front of Michael's house, David Miller's yard sale, you know, and I'm on a prominent corner, there's always yard sales stuck in my grasp, come to Noah or come to, come to Wincoop, Wincoop?
Wincoop.
Wincoop, thank you. Wincoop for a yard sale, I go, why is it in front of my house? And is that, is that those directional signs or, I don't know.
Right.
Well, again, I think if you, if you totally restricted the ability of people to do that, put those signs up, you would have an award.
Right.
Right.
But it's not unreasonable for those signs to have to be approved, you know, maybe there's a stamp that has to be on them, and if they don't have the stamp, that...
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're very sensitive to it. I know, for instance, who's having a yard sale because a lot of them do come in and say, hey, I'm having a yard sale and I'm going to have these signs and this is my location. And then, so I'll know who basically came in, and we actually have to fill out a sign permit. We don't charge anything for it, but they fill it out and I know that the sale is on a Friday, Saturday, and it'll be down on Sunday, but then you'll see these other ones pop up.
And for the most part, they stick the sign on my corner Friday afternoon and it's gone Sunday night. The people that are responsible aren't going to do that. There's some are.
Right, and what you want to do is you want to have people to be able to enforce it for those people who want it. And Joey Kerthoyes has had a landscaping sign on his front yard...
Yes, for a very long time.
For four months, five months now.
Those contracted signs are supposed to be up only during the duration of a, of the project.
Right, and I'm not sure, is he the contractor? Right, and, I'm not sure, is the contractor, is he the contractor?
That's.
He is part, he is part contractor to landscaping, he is, he is doing the landscaping.
Right.
So if I, if I hire ABC Landscaping Company to take care of, I'm too old, and I want to take care of my yard.
Yes, you are.
That means from May to October, they will be working on my project, that means they can leave a sign in front of my house for six months.
It says the duration of the project.
And can you, can you like get ten dollars a week from them for, for providing them with advertising?
A discount. So, you know, it's, it, there's a lot of, a lot of.
A lot of nuances, too.
Yes, a lot of, you can't just say, none of this, this is okay, and it's not okay, it's not that easy.
And unfortunately, the reality is, we can't necessarily assume that people aren't going to do what's in the best interest of.
So, yeah, feel free to email me the things, when I have, my badge.
I'd say you disagree with Miller, and.
You know, I will get together, you know.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with you on some of these things, but I don't think that they're, they're feasible.
Yes.
In some of them.
It was just, I was just.
It's more than I got, though.
Yep. So, good, okay, now, the Coon Flores parking lot.
Oh, by the way, she had a sign out front.
Yeah.
You saw it too?
Yeah.
She had a, uh.
Oh, the pottery?
Yeah.
On the side?
So, David Borstein came in, he dropped this off, he has the original, he wants a little clarification from the planning board on some, um, direction with the parking lot, and once, whatever we give to him tonight, he's gonna finalize and have it stamped and approved.
So, with the handicap spot over here, which is what we said is not a desirable spot, it, it doesn't restrict, John measured it's fifteen feet to the striping, and like twenty feet to the taillight, the passenger taillight of that car, is that enough room for cars to get by a handicapped person parked there?
Yeah, the problem with putting it here is it makes all of this asphalt.
Right, right.
You know, to get to that spot, you, you end up having a ninety percent yard with asphalt.
Right.
So what we had suggested, I had the scale, I could do it this way.
Oh, he has that, go ahead.
Right, is that, as I remember, this comes in like that, and then it comes over here, and you have one spot here, with a walkway to the front door, and that way, you provide landscaping on the site, and you minimize the asphalt in the back, and so you have twenty-four feet here, eighteen feet here, wherever that turns out to be.
Is that like an island, like, like?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would look a lot better.
So, you can have your handicap spot, it's close to the door, there's a walkway there, and then this becomes a landscaped area in front of the building, otherwise, you're essentially creating a front yard of asphalt.
And then the parking here is okay?
Yeah, that's what we want in the parking.
We set the parking over there.
Okay.
Yeah, the only.
On the right side, not the left side.
And then what about the, the entrance or exit coming off of nine, is that a one-way, or is that a two-way?
It's one-way in.
One-way in.
One-way in off of nine.
Two-way, that's.
Two-way.
Okay.
So no exit.
So it's one-way in.
Just right, no exit.
No exit. And then here's going to be an in and an out.
Okay, actually. Twenty-four, it's actually quite a bit.
He's got one inch for, I mean, for one inch, it's twenty feet.
Yeah, so the parking lot would be here.
You know what, there's even room for like a tree.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
Right in here.
I thought it was most important to get the trees there.
Right, though, if you got a tree here, it would, it would help.
Sure.
Hide the, the parking over here from.
I'll mark it up, because that's how, because this is what I'm gonna give them, you want some type of species, too, if you can give them some type of, um, idea.
Do you want evergreens, so it's, I want coconut palm trees.
Something that's, that's rain tolerant.
No, something that's tolerant of that new bug, what is that, the, uh, the red-tailed something or other?
Yeah.
That's in Pennsylvania, and in danger of attacking the whole country?
The lantern bug.
The lantern bug, yes, with those little red wings. Cause there wasn't, something was going on, there was twelve cars there on Saturday, and they were lined up, like five of them here, and seven of them here.
They all parked here.
They parked a long year, and straight a long year.
Given the choice, people are gonna park closest to the door.
But not, not this way, they were parked in a straight line, like, you know, parked on a single street.
So the handicap.
So are there, there are no power lines here, right?
No, no.
So these could be shade trees.
Right.
Right, that would look nice.
Just put ADA where the handicap spot is.
I put HA.
Oh, okay. Yep.
So.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
They only put, you know, like red oaks.
Red oaks?
Yeah, that's a good street tree, and that's what's being put out on the.
You know, like red maples?
Oh, those are red maples, actually, right, yeah, I like red oaks better, but, maples are, the root systems on them are shallow.
Right, but there's no sidewalk, right, there's no sidewalk.
You're right, they could put red maples, but generally speaking, uh, red oaks work better as street trees. I mean, you can mix it and do half red oak and half red oak.
So do you have everything you have to, to what, what, okay.
Yeah, so, we're gonna put the, he's gonna put the, uh, handicap back where it was originally, and then put the, uh, walkway around there, a little bit of an island, you guys want a tree on that island, or we just focus on?
You know, with the sidewalk there, I'm not sure there's space for a tree there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if you put it down there way along here, that's.
Okay.
That doesn't get enough traffic, it won't screen there.
We giving him a date to pay? He's planning on doing it before the, uh, snowfalls.
Only reason I say that is he just paid Forty-Seven West, it was originally scheduled twenty-five, thirty years ago.
No, I know, no, it's actually the same guys that are, that are contracted to do the, the, yeah, it's, you're right.
But the last thing I had was, uh, the fence, Connie's fence.
Yeah.
And we have what was done in twenty-fifteen, and then what was approved May first, and we mentioned, the board required about the existing fence to remain on the neighbor's side, but that's not clear which end you're talking about.
But the only, only side that has a fence is on the western side, and that's what I was referring to.
Now it's mostly gone, except for, like, I can see two mantles.
But it was there.
It was there then, yes.
Right, and that was the fence that was supposed to be maintained.
Connie's side, the fence, or it was her responsibility, or is it?
Yes, it was her fence on the, on the west side, strong side of the.
But she took it down, and he would like it back, or the neighbors would like it back.
So it, cause in the minutes from three years ago, it was said, uh, they will, uh, work together to share the expense of replacing the fence, so you're gonna order them to work together and put up a fence? Good luck.
No, I think it's her responsibility.
It's her responsibility.
She's doing, she's the one that has to satisfy a cycling.
And so I don't think, her argument isn't, uh, if or, if not put up a fence, she wants to know what kind of fence, and she was leaning towards a fence that is, um, prohibited in the historic district, it was like a, um, it wasn't chain link, but it was similar to it.
Wire mesh.
Wire mesh, and, and the reasoning was, because she wanted to plant ivy all over it, and then eventually, at some point, have a complete ivy screening.
Ivy grows on wood fence, it's good.
So, right, so, she's actually waiting here back for me tomorrow.
She could put it on a wood fence, and she has to have the back of it, unless she spends the money, has a double-sided fence.
We got the neighbor-friendly fence, that's what they call it, it's.
A double-sided?
Yeah, it's, same price as, not, yeah, I mean, it's.
It's a couple of dollars more, it's worth.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's nice, and, you know, we've seen it.
What's the difference between a wire mesh and a chain link?
The wire mesh is, and, and there were a lot of them in the village, you know, for a long time, typically about that high, and they typically have like curved.
Yeah.
Scallop tops and square, or, right.
A wire fence as opposed to a wire mesh.
Like a deer, like a deer fence, like something.
But that doesn't provide any screening.
Right.
No, but, but the thought of, um, ivy growing all over it, and ivy's gonna deteriorate a wooden fence.
Oh, she could spend the money on.
Yeah, but Connie, Connie's old enough that we're not worried about it.
That's what I keep saying, are we still?
We don't usually film meetings.
Well, especially, we're done with meeting.
We're never done.
We're never done.
Anybody have any other?
Wait, I, I need clarification.
A wooden fence.
Is that it, a wooden fence?
I think that's, I think that's what's, um.
Okay, so.
Most appropriate.
It's a wooden fence, are we talking privacy, privacy, six feet?
No more than, no more than, than seventy-four inches.
But is it?
Behind the front?
Behind the front plane of the.
Now, what about, um, a minimum, are we, are we gonna allow her, what, a four-foot fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute, the original fence was stockade, that was.
Six foot, yeah, actually, if it's a privacy fence, then.
So it'd be four feet up to the front plane, and then sixteen thereafter.
Right.
Technically, it's seventy-four inches and.
Right.
Fifty-inch or something, I can't remember.
Yeah, we added two inches to allow it to set off the ground, but still be.
And if there's any deviation from this, she would have to come back to the planning board for any changes.
Yes.
Yeah, we want a similar style, and what was taken down?
Or if they neighbor in her.
If she could.
Get back on good terms, and come up with something else that's agreeable of both of them.
Yeah, we're all gonna make a.
The, the only thing that I'm just curious is, I don't, how many pools are in the historic district?
Well, you got one across the street, wasn't that Dr. Yerri's mother's house is in her pool over there?
It's not Dr. Yerri's mother, it's his wife.
His wife, instead of Goldberry.
His earlier wife.
They approved?
They have a fence around it.
Been there forever.
Yeah, there have been a variety that have come and gone.
And the bed, doesn't he have a pool way back in the spring?
Is Connie thinking about a pool?
No, Strong's had a pool in there.
Oh, Strong's had a pool, I didn't know that.
There's very few pools. I just have an issue when people throw rocks and live in glass houses. I don't know, there's, I don't know, I had the conversation with him, and obviously, he sent a letter to probably a board member, and now.
I got one.
You're special, you're special.
I'm a native, you all are natives.
All right, enough said.
Any other questions, any other comments, any other things, any clarification, we're all squared away and everything?
Probably not, but.
Awesome. See everybody on election day, vote early and often, we'll see you, we'll see you at seven o'clock.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded it.
Mary, I can, did all of you favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Keep leaving that part out.